The pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will start with our council activity reports. Sean sent me a little blurb of what his activities were before he got sick, and most of them were the same ones I was at. So we'll start with those. It was the big go for the band, Queen Beats. We both were there for that. And the EDAP meeting last Tuesday. And he was at the lodging tax meeting on Wednesday. And I had a couple of policies and procedure meetings, twice. And then LMC conference, we were all at this last weekend. So, Mr. Thielman, would you like to give a report?
Sure. We had a joint planning session with the township, and then the planning session with the city council here, and also the Minnesota Cities over this past weekend, their mid-winter conference.
Neil?
February 14th, we had policy and procedure. Main thing was we talked about the part-time administrative assistant. February 16th, I had coffee with county commissioner Bertram and did a lot of discussion about the new park that is going to be a reality. February 20th, I went to St. Cloud to give support for the 202-acre new county park that the commissioners wanted to approve or to proceed. And on the 22nd, we policy and procedure interviewed the applicant for assistant liquor store manager. That's on tonight's agenda. And the last thing, I was at the LMC conference Friday and Saturday. A lot of good discussions. The former police chief of St. Paul, Todd Axel, gave a really, really good presentation about how they handle media and went through a whole case scenario that cost in the city $2 million.
Rightfully so.
Megan, your turn.
I was also at the LMC conference, and I enjoyed the speakers, too. They were all really good, and I really enjoyed the former police chief's one as well. Also, I was recently appointed to the community foundation board of directors, so I'm really looking forward to being a bridge between the city and some other entities there, and I think there's going to be a lot of overlap in projects. I'm excited for that. And beyond that, I think that was all I had.
Okay. Next, we'll go with department heads' reports. Mike, you're up first.
Fire calls up to date as of 2/19/24. Medical assists, we had seven car accidents, three fire calls, one CO alarms, one fire alarms, one, and canceled and route three times, totaling 16 calls. Updates on staffing, we are in need of two firefighters. Applications are open right now. As far as I know, we have zero applicants so far. Our trainings for January was bloodborne pathogens, right-to-know, and hazmat. Training in February was, we had our physicals done and our cancer awareness training. Updates in 2024 so far, we put our new Unit 12 into service. It is our pumper tanker truck. We are looking at doing a facelift to the exterior of the fire hall roofs and walls. We will be getting a new cascade system. I'm assuming it's going to be within the next month or so. We put a committee together to replace our rescue truck. New firefighters Jeremiah Johnson and Christine Story have passed all their classes and can perform all duties on the fire service now. In February, yeah, in February, we had a spouse appreciation where we did an escape room, and everybody had lots of fun at it.
Are you going to surplus out a truck?
Yes, I'm working on that right now. It should be at the next council meeting. We'll be surplusing the old truck out.
Anybody have any other questions for Chief Stur? Okay, thanks, Mike. We will be moving your other item up on the agenda. And Ron?
All right, thank you. You've seen today, we did have crews out the street sweeping first time in February, but I can never remember. If you've seen in your packet, we do have some information from the MPCA on the PFAS, that they are extending the MOU on that. And they sampled 83 communities, of which five were on the low end, six were, 66 were in the medium, and 12 on the high end. We, or City of Painsville, we fell into that medium category. Where the PFAS treatment is going, I guess at this point, I can't tell you. I don't think they know themselves yet. April 27th, again, is the spring cleanup scheduled. BCA is also coming out with a chloride grant to help us hopefully reduce some chlorides. Currently, we're putting in action a plan together to submit for that. Out at the airport, there's been a lot of activity out there. You know, currently, we have four empty hangars. Hopefully, by the end of this week, we will likely only have one empty hangar. And the fuel that we're selling out there, all the training that they're doing is showing, going through a lot of fuel. August 24th, again, is the air show. This past weekend, I was at the Moonlight Meander down at the nature park. That went over quite well, was nice and warm. Again, if any residents do have any unused or abandoned wells, we do have funds to seal them up for you. So please come down and contact me on it. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Ron? Okay. Carl?
Well, I overlapped with a lot of you here. I was also at the EDAP board meeting, lodging tax, planning, and joint planning. I went with Sean and Neil to St. Cloud with our Stearns County Commissioners meeting as well to support the park. And I joined you guys for part of the event in Alexandria. Two other items here to note is Kristen and I, today, we did the public election test. So for the primary, that is coming up first week in March. And yeah, we did a liquor store assistant manager interview, and that is on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Okay, nobody's here for public forum. You want to talk? Go ahead. You're here so often, I just don't know if you want to talk.
Yeah, you're just observing. For fun.
That's okay. My name is Will, again, Will Beardmore. I live on Belmont, and this is my daughter Cecilia. A couple meetings ago, I asked about childcare, what efforts were ongoing. I know there's recent history of it, but wondering what momentum existed now, if there was some way I could help or my peers could help. And heard that I'd be reached out to. I haven't heard anything yet, or if I have, I haven't seen anything. Wondering if there is a follow-up, and if not, why not? If there are ways that I can help, I'd love to help, or that my peers can help, we'd love to help. This is about the most pressing public health issue that my Painsville cluster has. I'd love to see some action, either a survey, or a committee, or something going on, but what are you doing?
All right. Yeah, I would like to get your information later, if that's okay, and I can reach out to you about that. I did childcare for a long time myself, so, and it's something we've looked into fairly consistently, and it's just there's a lot of issues, but I have some, some hope that we're going to move forward. So I'd like to talk to you about that after, if that's okay? Thank you.
Also, I believe there's something coming in this session.
I really hope so.
There were some.
I think so, yeah.
A bill of some sort, some money, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Will. Okay, we're going to move, we're going to do the, after the consent agenda, we'll take new business A and move that up before we do the old business. So on the consent agenda, we have minutes from, we have quite a few minutes. Park and tree, special park and tree meeting, a public works board, city council, policies and procedures, EDAP planning and joint planning, two joint plannings. And then vouchers totaling $176,165.46. And that is it for the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Or any one?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prove the consent. Left hand. The fire department on page 45 needs their yearly contribution from us?
Municipal contribution to our relief, our PERA now.
It's that time of year again, huh? And I lost my page. How does that happen? How much is it?
$5,000.
That's what I thought. I was thinking we didn't change it, so.
Is that the same amount just last year?
Yes.
Yeah, it's been the same for quite a while.
Yeah, for quite a while, yep.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that contribution?
I'll make the motion to approve the municipal contribution of $5,000, Painsville Fire Department, PERA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion's made by Neil, seconded by Paul, to approve the donation of $5,000 to the fire department relief. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Did you have anything to say, Chris, since you came?
No, he's here for support.
All right, I like that.
All right, that's it then.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Yep, good night.
Enjoy your meetings.
Or not. Okay. Up to old business, oh, they're not here, so what do we, do we have any updated information, Chief?
Well, Chief can give you an update, and then Bill drafted the findings here that we will go through today.
It's all still there.
Oh, I don't buy it today, so I knew it was all still there, but.
It's all still there. I know there was discussion at the last meeting about whether or not those vehicles were operable or inoperable. Those vehicles have been sitting there for years. They haven't moved. They're in the exact same position. The only reason the black truck moved was because we had to move it to get it out of the way to remove the other two vehicles. So despite the, I guess, statements by the homeowners, nothing is being done on those vehicles, and they're just sitting there, kind of delaying things.
And these, I just drafted findings based on the last meeting. I mean, there's really nothing more to do, except if there's anything about the findings that you think is incorrect, or you'd like stated differently, obviously, I could tweak those before they're signed, but we're just looking for a motion to approve the findings and authorize them to be signed. I'll let me add music.
Yeah, well, what can I say? It's kind of catchy.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to accept the findings, the facts, and decision.
Did you have a question, Neil?
Does that bring the abatement into effect, or?
Yeah, so, I mean, the next step in the process is, you know, I mean, is going to be to get, apply for an administrative search warrant so that we can enter the property to remove the stuff. I think the property owners made it pretty clear that we're not going to be allowed to enter the property without one. So that's, as soon as I, I'm looking for, to get this version of this signed with the city seal on it, I'll submit that to, to the court along. I'll prepare an affidavit, an application for a warrant. We'll go from there.
And then basically, what we'll need to do is similar to last time. We will have the arments come down to remove the vehicles, and this time, we'll probably need Public Works to come down to clean up the tower tires, unless there's some company that the city would like to hire to do that.
Well, can Public Works do it?
How many tires is it?
A dozen.
Is it that many?
Well, it might be less than that, but.
I think it might be less.
I think it might be, might be a six or seven, but.
There's some other things there, too.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a lot. I mean, probably just the city's trailer would be enough to take out of there what's a violation.
So there's going to be expense involved with getting rid of the garbage and tires?
Yeah, and I mean, I imagine there'll be some proceeds from the sale of vehicles. I don't know, but I would.
If it goes that far.
Yeah, last time it didn't.
You know, it could be another.
Right, yeah, we don't know. We don't know.
But at this point, if we're going into abatement, I would like all the costs associated with abatement to be on the residents, and if that's not paid, it goes like our water bills and garbage.
Right, and we do those every fall.
I mean, I don't know if we need a motion to put that process in order, or.
Well, it's.
I'm okay until we go into abatement. Once abatement goes, all expenses, I think, should be the.
It's in our ordinance that we can assess back the costs incurred by the city to do abatement. So, I mean, that should be done with our other assessments to the tax rolls in the fall.
So we don't need that as part of the motion?
No.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions, comments?
Well, yeah, I don't think any of us like to be in this position, but here we are. And I, you know, I've reached out to and tried to, you know, ask if there's any way that we can help, or just anyone we can put them in touch with who could help, or whatever. And we, I haven't really heard much, so I think at this point, it's, the process is what it is, and need to go forward.
Okay. Well, a motion has been made by Paul and seconded by Neil to approve the findings of fact. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carried. Downtown drainage improvements, that must be over there with you guys.
All right, thank you. Previously, we had discussed the downtown drainage and the option number two. If you look at that option number two, a good portion of it lies within the flood plain. Before we proceed with purchasing any land, there's one thing we want to look at, and this actually came from the owner of property owners, and that's moving it up. And to do that, we need to do another study to make sure all the flows are going to work. The Public Works, we did take a look at this and are recommending it. You know, we don't want to go buying property without making sure that the flow and everything and elevations will work.
Want to add on?
Yeah, maybe to add also, you know, really, this is just the next step in this process, is moving the design along a little further, and that'll help us with some funding applications as well, to show that the city's moved the process forward and actually got some survey data and done some preliminary design work on it.
More money, they want. Somebody's always spending money. Okay. Anybody else have any questions, or anybody want to make a motion to approve a preliminary engineering report in the amount of $16,900?
I'll move to approve Bolton &amp; Mink, Inc., to complete the preliminary engineering report in the amount of $16,900 for the downtown drainage projects with funds to come from the Stormwater Utility Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion, questions?
I'll just, I'm on Public Works, and we talked this over. You know, when we were trying to get the digester natural gas company, we had an awful lot of complaints, oh, the river's going to get fluid. Well, this is a step in the right process of, right now, all this runoff ends up in the river. With this.
Pond.
Project that would take care of, would go a long ways towards cleaning up what's going into rice and chromis.
Just get rid of that. Thank you for that. Okay, to all, I'll see. Yeah, the motion's been made by Megan, seconded by Neil, to approve Bolton &amp; Mink's to complete the preliminary engineering report in the amount of $16,900 for the downtown drainage project with funds to come from the Stormwater Utility Fund. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carried, no names. Ampe Park Shelter. One of you guys down there for that?
Okay, thank you. Park Committee, we met and have recommended to proceed with the plans, specs, and advertise for bids here. The amenities that we're looking at here, first of all, you got the handicap restrooms. We do have an ADA accessible sidewalk from Strauss, South Street to the shelter, and then again, from the shelter over to the soccer fields. That was one of the requirements of the DNR that we put that in there. We do have a kitchen facility, roughly 12 by 20, so if anybody wants to use that or groups want to utilize it, it will be there. Drinking fountain, the shelter area itself will have seating for roughly 80 people. Sprinter system, and the picnic tables, I believe, will be in there. So, yeah, it is ready to go to bed. So if you have any specific questions, or anybody from the park floor wants to add on?
I think you about covered it.
Looks good.
Yeah.
The pictures are nice.
I think it's going to be a really.
It will be a very nice facility.
Yeah, I think it will be, too. And the numbers I've seen with the soccer program, I think it'll be really helpful, since it's just continuing to grow. I think it'll be good. They don't even have bathrooms out there right now, so I think it'll be a big help.
Ron, was the serving window, I didn't hear, was that part of the update? The serving window is, or has it been changed from the original, it's like an eight-foot serving window now? Yes.
Yeah, if you look at page 16 of the packet, you can see the serving window through one of the confused. I'm not sure. Page 16.
I thought it was always there, it's just been made wider, and then you put that ledge out.
We enlarged it.
Originally, it was two separate sort of windows.
Yeah.
It got pushed into one, and it's eight foot wide.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, on the side, okay. I had a question real quick. With this shelter, I know Ron, you and I talked about this, are we looking to put automatic, an automatic locking system in this?
That is what we were looking at. Correct.
Right. Yes.
So nobody has to come around and lock it up every night, or something?
No, actually, when we went toward St. Joe, they had this through their entire park system, or just the locks go off at times. We looked into it, and they work very well for new installations, for rehab from our old parks. This time, I don't think it's there, but for the new facilities, yes, we will put it in.
Well, I remember when we built the other shelter.
Yes.
That's not in catalog.
Right.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the plans, specs, the Ampe Park Shelter? So, said to advertise for bids.
I'll make the motion to approve Ampe Park Shelter plans and specs and authorize advertisement for bids.
I'll second.
And, motion's been made by Neil, seconded by Megan, to authorize, to approve with the Ampe Park Shelter plans and specs and authorize advertisement for bids. Anything else anybody needs to, before we vote? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
I think we got.
What other cabinet, you'll see in there, there won't be a requirement through the DNR grant to put a deep restriction on that property. So anytime you get state funds or grant funds, so they put a deep restriction saying that you can't sell the property or change the use of properties since there's state funds involved with the park, so there won't be a deep restriction required.
Okay. We probably weren't going to sell it anyway. Maybe I'm 100 years. All right, moving on, our next item, airport request for crack group. Oh, we need to fix it, huh?
Okay, thank you. Yes, we have two items here, the request for qualifications and the crack sealing. Once every five years, I believe it is, the state does require us to make sure our engineers are still qualified. And you can see qualifications are all enclosed in the packet. And I would think Bolton &amp; Mink is still very qualified to proceed with our engineering. And the other one is the crack sealing. The crack sealing is estimated right now at about $125,000. We did, the other option we looked at was a complete rehab, and at this time, that is really not feasible for the city. That would be over $2 million.
No, no, it's not the budget.
At this point, we would recommend the crack sealing.
Go ahead.
Yeah, as we talked about, I think, last month, with doing the crack sealing project will give, give us a few years to evaluate how those cracks respond. Hopefully, we're able to proceed with more of just overlay type improvement in the future if the cracks hold up, the crack repair hold up. If not, you know, we'll be working with the FA and MINDO through this process, you know, to determine whether it's an overlay or a complete rehab type project in a few years.
If it ends up being a rebound, we probably could get some state money for it?
Both, actually, whether it's an overlay or a, or a complete rehab, there's discretionary federal funds will be able to trigger for, for that improvement. So it's just the magnitude of the project changes considerably, whether it's an overlay or a rehab.
Somebody want to make a motion? One of them, we have to have two.
I'll move to accept the request for qualifications from Bolton &amp; Mink, Inc., as the City of Painsville's airport engineers.
Second.
Megan and Neil, okay. Motion's been made by Megan, seconded by Neil, to accept the request for qualifications from Bolton &amp; Mink as the City of Painsville airport engineers. There's nothing else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we need a motion for the plans and specifications for the crack repair.
I'll move to authorize preparation of plans and specifications for the 2024 Airport Crack Repair Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Megan, seconded by Paul, to authorize preparation of plans and specs for the 2024 Airport Crack Repair Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carried. Now we're moving into new business again. Yes, I have to move down. First item is.
Second item.
Second item, very good, first item. It's true, it's true. Is it the hiring?
Yep.
Full-time liquor store assistant manager.
Yep, we did the interviews this past week. We were supposed to interview two candidates, but only one candidate showed up. And they're already working at the liquor store, so we had a long discussion about how that's going to work out if we were to offer to them. And, you know, I think everybody was kind of in agreement that we should proceed.
That's true. We interviewed and decided to try.
That's a recommendation.
And Bill was good with it, so that's the main thing. So we have a motion to promote Kristen Desum to the full-time liquor store assistant manager position at grade seven, step one, 22, 25 cents an hour, effective March 4th.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Paul has made the motion, Megan seconded it, all those in favor of giving the job to Kristen Desum. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, we have another Steel Coat project. You guys had time off for that.
Yeah, in keeping up with our street maintenance program, we've identified a number of streets to be sealed. we seal coated this year. We've done seal coating projects every other year for the last, probably 20 years already. This also estimate does include the fog seal, and the projected estimate at this time is $245,000. The funds for this would come out of the street, uh, street reserves, so this did go through the Public Works, and they have recommended proceeding.
Schedule's in here, so... How many streets is it? Got to look at the map. Oh, there we go. Oh. Anybody have anything else they want to ask Ron? If not, we entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2024 Seal Coat Project Plans and Specs and Authorize Advertisement for Bids.
So, a second? Motion's made by Neil, seconded by Megan, to approve the 2024 Seal Coat Project Plans and Specifications and Authorize for Bids. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving right on. Okay.
All Ron looks like.
It's all Ron and Chuck tonight. Okay, next?
Okay, to purchase out the Public Works truck, we're looking at a 24 Dodge Ram 3500, that is a one ton, to replace the 2011, which we started working on back pre-COVID in '21, and nobody was able to supply anything to us, and that is still the case, so we did check with both of our local dealers, and neither of them can supply this either. So, we both said yes, go for it, if we can get it, let's get it. Long time, this time, we did not bring the box forward yet, we will be working on that in the coming weeks, so hopefully that will be... The funds for this will come out of the water sewer reserves, and we will need to add on here the tax entitlement, that is a local responsibility under the state contract.
When is it going to arrive?
Uh, this is 18 weeks out, so we do have a little bit of time to work on the box.
Oh, good. Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Ron on this? It's about time.
Under the state contract, I did ask him how much if you or I were going to go buy this, and he said somewhere between 12,000 to 15,000 is the difference.
For the box, oh, the difference.
In the cost of the vehicle.
Okay, so, motion for, to purchase this truck?
I'll make the motion to approve the state contract number 169667, amount of $47,350 from Dodge of Burnsville for a 2024 Ram 3500.
What's the tax entitlement?
Yeah, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made by Neil, seconded by Megan, to approve the state contract in the amount of $47,350 from Dodge of Burnsville for 2024 Ram 3500. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We bought, we're buying a truck. Next, Aeration Building.
Yes, the Aeration Control Room, the air conditioning unit up there, we do have several variable frequency drive units, anybody familiar with them, they do create enormous amount of heat, so that room is not climate controlled. The air conditioner did go out several weeks ago, and we did have Voss up there to try and troubleshoot it, we noted that they're free, I'm thinking on it, and that parts are no longer available, and both contractors that we have had inquired with, they've both said the same thing, you're better off replacing it with two, three ton units. This was also turned over to insurance, as we do have some insurance for equipment failure, whether it covers it 100%, I guess I don't know at this time, but we would like to get the new unit coming forward, and Voss, obviously, is the law, at the 1765.
Why don't you do it in before something gets hot? Which could be next week, but that's right.
All right, we're lucky, it's winter kind.
Yeah. It was your wishes, somebody wished to make that a motion, to get a new air conditioner units, two of them, three tunners?
I'll move to approve the quote from Voss Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $17,650 to replace the air conditioning unit at the Aeration Building with money from the pre-Aeration Replacement Fund.
And hopefully some insurance money.
Hopefully, indeed.
Is there a second?
I got a question on this.
Sure, well, we can have a second first.
Okay.
That we can ask.
Okay, second.
Okay.
Okay. I'm looking at Voss's proposal, and then opposite two ductless replacement, the lighter materials come up to $16,600, which is different than the quoted price of $17,650, so it's about $1,000 off.
Is that the electrical being added to it?
Yeah. Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes, you got to add those two together.
Got you, makes sense, all right. That's all I had.
Good question.
Yes, good question.
Good catch. Okay. Motion's made by Megan, seconded by Paul, to go with Voss on the replacement of the AC, $17,650. Any more questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Okay, last on new business, before we go into closed session, is MMBA...
Yep.
...conference that is in April.
Liquor Board discussed it?
Liquor Board discussed it, we did, and, um, how come Jennifer's not on here?
Um, is it just because it's from a different source of funding for her?
Yeah, but it's still, we should have been in the same motion.
Yeah.
With her funds coming from...
Yeah.
...reserves.
It'll come from reserves, generally, yeah.
Yeah, so we could just add that in the motion, so we don't have to do it again.
All right. Makes it easier.
Jennifer and I are wishing to go to this and take a couple of their seminars for Liquor Board. She's on the Liquor Board, too.
Should we ask the liquor store manager about his vote for this?
No, he doesn't want us to go. We told him we don't stay in their house, so... No, he's okay with it.
Yeah, I think it'll be good to have you guys in attendance.
So, whoever makes the motion, if you want to approve the attendance of me and Jennifer Welling, and my funds to come from the council training line item, and Jennifer's from reserves.
I'll move to approve the attendance of Jean Soini to the MMBA conference and pay for such from the council training line item, and approve the attendance of Jennifer Welling and her, where did hers come from?
Reserves.
Reserves. With the funding for her attendance to come from reserves.
Okay. Motion's, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made by Megan and seconded by Paul for myself and Jennifer Welling to go to the MMBA conference in April, with my funds to come from the council monies and hers from reserves. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And before we close, I'll go through informational, we have, um, an, the fire department report that Mike gave us, which was really good, and January in code financial reports, liquor revenue and expenses, city attorney expense report, capital improvement report, and aerospace class, thank you, my goodness, those airplanes have been going like crazy the last couple of weeks. Oh, right over my head.
Yeah.
And then the MOU for PAFS, PFAS. And that is it for informational, so we will, according to state statute, whatever that number is.
Can we take five before we go into closed session?
Well, we can close.
Yeah.
Before we discuss. We will be going in according to, I'll need a motion and vote to meet in closed session as permitted by Minnesota State Statute, section 13D 03, 13D 05, subdivision three, to discuss an offer for real property located at 890 South Street and 901 South Street. All right? So, is there a motion to do such? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor going into closed session?
Aye.
Okay, we're going into closed session. Okay. Okay, we're back in open session. Okay. So, discuss the property, South Street. Now, do we have a motion on what we wish to do, so that we can have a vote?
Can I?
Well, we should have a motion before we...
Well, I guess I move to offer a swap, like, but we need to make it contingent on making sure that the assessments and everything are already, we're closed on that lot, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, I guess that's my, sorry, that didn't sound very eloquent, but that's my motion.
Swap the properties, but make sure that...
Yes.
On 890 are already, are currently, the assessments are all paid.
Yes.
Before we do the swap.
Yes.
So, repeat the motion, so Kristen gets it.
Oh, jeez, well, what did I say? I move to make a swap on those two properties based on what we find out about the assessments of said property.
No, just...
I can't make it for you.
I don't know.
Okay.
Swap 890 and...
Jean, would you like to make a motion? That sounds motiony. Megan's struggling.
That we wish, that we'll swap the properties...
Yes.
...on the contingent...
Yes.
...that the assessments have been all paid on the property...
Yes.
...we're receiving.
Yes.
And identify the properties that you're swapping.
Yes, lot 890...
Lot 890 and...
On South Street and 901 on Kier Lane.
Yes.
Does that now make sense to everybody?
Court, yes.
Yeah, Kier Court, Kier Court.
Jean made the motion, Kristen, so now we'll have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All right.
Second by one.
Then we will...
Before we vote...
Yep. One more comment?
If we're indeed doing this, I still think our lot is bigger and of more value than the lot we're getting. I would recommend four, 5,000 difference.
I understand where you're coming from. The problem is, he thinks he's doing us a favor by selling us that lot.
He made it clear that if there is any, any money...
He would, he won't give it to us, yeah.
Understandable.
Well, then we keep the lot, and we'll do what we want.
Well, that's why we're going to vote, because we have a second now.
What, um, I guess, I'm curious about what kind of taxes we're looking at from those lots once it's built on.
It all depends on the house they built.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot is bigger, it is already worth a little more, yes. It is. All right, I made the motion that we do the lot swi, swap, and Megan seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oops, I should have pounded it, those opposed.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. All right, we will go back into closed session, keep the motion to closed session as permitted by Minnesota Statute, section blah, 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 13D dot 03, 13D dot 05, subdivision three, to discuss an offer for real property located at 317 State Highway 55, parcel number 70 dot 39363 dot 0025.
So moved.
Hey.
Yeah, I need to, I'm confused, thank you.
Is there a second from one of you guys?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Going into closed session as soon as Kristen shuts it off.
All right, we're on.
Okay. Back in open session.
Back we go.
And we discussed property at, real property located at 317 State Avenue, Highway 55. We have directed our attorney to draw up an agreement, making our offer, and we will be brought back to a future meeting.
Okay.
Is that it?
Do we need to vote on it, or?
No.
Okay.
All right, if that's all for tonight, we are adjourned. Woo! Hey, that was a lot of bidding.